Good evening and welcome to the January 9th Planning Commission meeting. My name is Michael Barnes, the new Planning Director. Can we call—Madam Clerk, would you mind calling order and establishing a call, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
Mr. Murray is joining us online.
Okay, we need to have a motion to allow Mr. Murray to participate. Can he—
So moved.
—remotely? Thank you.
But before we proceed to that, if we could actually have Mr. Murray patched in remotely, please, and he can make that request.
Yep.
Well, there he is.
Hello, I would like to join remotely due to the circumstances of my road being flooded out, and I am currently at my residence.
So, Mr. Murray, for someone else who lives in the rural part of the county, is this what living in the country is like nowadays for those of us who live farther out into the—so the reaches of Albemarle County?
Pretty much. I mean, particularly those that are surrounded by rivers, so—
The creek—trick—the Creek Dunros, huh?
That's one of the downsides of being in Sugar Hollow.
Well, be safe, hm? Be safe. Don't let those bears come in and get you tonight when they don't have a place to live.
Okay, I'll take the role.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, before you do, if we could establish a motion and a second to allow Mr. Murray to participate remotely?
We did. We had Mr. Claiborne made the motion, Ms. Firehawk seconded the motion.
Very good.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. So, thank you, Mr. Murray, for being here. The second matter is other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none. The next matter on the agenda is election of officers. Do we have a nomination for Chair?
I'd like to make a nomination for the role of Chair, Fred Missel.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to read the role?
But before the role is called, there should be a call if there are any other nominations for Chair at this point?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other nominations?
And if none, it would be in order to proceed to the roll call vote at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Thank you. You didn't pay for yourself.
Hopefully, he's sleeping. He's having coffee.
All right, I think that's—
Actually, I tried, Commissioner Bivins.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I guess—I'd lead the meeting. I think I've done my damage. Thank you. Well, extremely well done, sir. Thank you. Apparently, being Chair gives you two mics. I'm not sure if that's a good thing or not.
You're in stereo.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's confidence, and I really do respect this group incredibly largely, a great deal, and so I'm really thankful to have the opportunity to work with everybody, for another year at least, and again, thank you very much for your confidence in me. So, I think the next is to ask for a motion or a nomination for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that Louise Carazana will be your Vice—be yours and our Vice Chair.
Second.
Great. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? I move that nominations be closed. I think that's a no, and if that's the case, could we—see, we have—
And just to clarify, procedurally, if there are no other nominations, you can proceed directly to a vote on the nominee.
Great, thank you. Yes, ready for vote, thanks.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Bye.
Well, if I could just take this opportunity, too, before we move on, to do a couple quick thanks. First of all, I really want to thank our outgoing Chair, Commissioner Claiborne. I have to say, the level of professionalism and really just your thoughtful approach to the position is—has been amazing, and a real—you're a real role model to me, and hopefully, I'll be able to measure up to that. Also, thank Louise for being willing to take the Vice Chair position, and as always, I think we've worked together for many years, even before this. I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to work. And Kevin McDermott, who is hiding in the audience here, sincere thanks to Kevin McDermott for being the steady hand on the tiller over the last—how many years have you been in that? Just one year? And it is amazing how Kevin—I don't think you've ever not had an answer to a question, and it's always been a right one. So, Michael, no—no pressure there, but I think you've got pictures to fill, too. So, with that, we can continue—thanks for indulging me. We can continue on to the agenda and move on to the discussion of Planning Commission rules and procedures. Mr. Barnes, I think it's you for that?
Yeah, as far as the rules and procedures, there have been no changes this year.
Okay.
They're the same as they've been in the past.
Great. Well, assuming you all have had a chance to look at them, are there any questions, any discussion, before we make a motion to adopt those, I assume?
It'd be a motion to re-adopt if there are no other questions—no other amendments by the members of the Commission.
Great. Any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to re-adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Awesome. Madam Clerk, vote, please.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
And Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all, and we will now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, the discussion of committees and boards and bodies to which Commission members serve as liaisons. Back to you, Mr. Barnes. Could you present a brief overview? So, before you and your package, you've got 15 committees there, of which the last one actually is a repeat of one earlier. So, the NPO Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, Mr. Carazana actually serves on that, Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee, which I think is item number six, I think, in your list, and Karen was also pointing out that the Capital Improvements Program Oversight Committee hasn't met in some while. Whether that's going to be inactive or not moving forward, I—to be honest, don't know, but—
I checked with our Board Chair last year, and it was the intention it was disbanded.
Disbanded?
Yes, never to rise again.
I see. So, but the other committees are active, and there are names of Planning Commissions associated with that. I don't know if your prerogative is to keep those the same, or if to move people around on those committee assignments. Why don't we start by asking the group, and I'll maybe begin with Commissioner Moore, how do you feel about your current appointments, and would you prefer to keep those or change them?
Right now, it's fine by me to be on the Places 29 for Rio. More bandwidth is not something I need at the moment, so I'm okay with what I've got.
Great, and Mr. Bivins? Chair, so, I would only add one other piece here, that I'm not quite sure where the University of Virginia Master Planning Committee, where it stands today. It's—I just don't know. So, until we have a sense of that, and maybe if the Vice Chair knows if there's—it has a sense of where that might be, I—but I don't believe it has met in a bit of—in a bit of time, and so it may be that that's on a hiatus. It's not as if there hasn't been a lot of plans that have come out of the institution that have been adopted by the Board of Visitors, and that have also come before us, obviously, but I'm not quite sure if that is a—still a committee which is—which is living and breathing. Other than that—
I can—I can find out. I agree that it has not met in quite a while, and I'm not sure of other—other meetings that have—have—
Perhaps supplanted that. I don't have a problem with with how it is today. The only other thing I would ask, at one point, and the AC44 was a rotating—we had hoped to rotate each of us, or some of—some portion of us, but I know the plan has changed, and how we're populating that has changed, and so I—I think that's a conversation that I would recommend, Chair, that you might have with Mr. Barnes, about how that's—how that's going to be populated by us. You're talking about the second-to-last AC44 Comp Plan Working Group Committee? Correct, correct, correct. Louise has done this past season, and I did the season prior to that. Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, I do know the answer to that one. They are going to change the working groups, the people participating on that, so I think there was some discussion about having a new Planning Commissioner being represented on this, moving to Phase Three.
Okay, so let's leave that as an open item and keep bouncing around. So, Commissioner Bivins, LUPAC still good? That's fine, that's fine. All the rest of them are fine. Okay, perfect. Commissioner Claiborne?
Mr. Chair, I'm fine staying where I am for those two assignments, Pantop, CAC, Places 29, North Representative.
Got it, I was looking for the second one. Okay, perfect. And Commissioner Carazana?
Yeah, so the AC44, I think they only met a handful of times this committee, and for me, it was really hard to attend those meetings when they came up, so like if somebody else can—
Can step up and do that, okay. And were you on others, or is that the—
I'm on the—the Transportation Advisory—
Oh, yes, right, gotcha.
I thought there was a difference between that and the NPO, though, so I think there is a distinction—
There is, and I thought you were on the NPO.
I was not on the NPO.
You were not on the NPO Tech. I thought you were on the NPO Tech.
No, I was in the—in the C-Tech, or—yes, C-Tech.
Who's your Chair?
Well, Mr. McDermott was Chair when we started, and—
Is Rory your Chair? Is Rory the Chair of that now?
Thank you, just want to clarify here. There are two committees with the NPO that are referenced, and I think there are supposed to be representatives for both, although on the list, it refers to both of them as the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, that's one of the ones, and then the other is the NPO Technical Committee, and I believe Louise was on that. So, it sounds like what the mistake was is that the—the names of the committee on the list are incorrect, but there should be two committees. One is the NPO Tech, and one is the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee.
And then there's the NPO itself.
The NPO itself, which the Planning Commission does not need to appoint a representative to.
So I think—I think that's the—there should be the NPO Tech down here, which is the one that I was participating in.
So you're not on the C-Tech?
It—so I think they're meeting—they meet—
Together?
Together, but I'm in the NPO Tech.
Got it. So, I'm sorry to be unclear, but—so do you—we—would you still be on the C-Tech? And we would just add NPO Tech to the list?
I am by instance staying on on the NPO Tech, which—I think it's the same meeting.
It's actually two different meetings.
Is it two different meetings?
There's one that's during the day, I guess you haven't come into, that's the NPO Technical Meetings, and staff, mostly staff at that meeting, some Planning Commissioners are there. Then there's the Citizens one, that usually happens in the evening at night.
Okay.
And so I was getting a little bit confused on that myself, but you have been coming to the NPO Tech.
NPO Tech, it's the one that I—that's the one that I signed up for at the beginning of last year.
Right, so we should have your name at the bottom of the sheet there.
Yes.
And— Okay, and so do we need a Planning Commissioner to be on C-Tech?
Last year.
We do not?
We think that we do need one on the Citizens, one that meets in the evenings. Usually, I think it's like the second or third Tuesday of the month.
Okay, got it.
I have that right.
The second, we couldn't attend it. Maybe it's the—
Because I'm just going to leave as—
Tell you what, why don't we find out a little bit more information and follow up on this one? I'm sure you guys can catch up on what they're doing on their activities. Usually, I participated in the past, my previous role, it was a Citizen Committee, you know, a lot of the same information that you would have dealt with on the NPO Committee itself. It may be advisable to have somebody separate. They're going through their long-range transportation plan now, and it might be an interesting time to participate.
Okay, well, let's leave that as a—
We'll follow up.
Yeah, that'd be great, and we'll just leave that as a second open item, so we've got AC44 open and C-Tech open so far. Commissioner Firehawk?
I'm fine with my assignments.
Historic Preservation Committee solid?
Love them.
Okay, great, and Commissioner Murray?
Yes, I'm fine with my assignments, but if I'm needed on another committee, I'm willing to sign up for one.
Okay, awesome, so you're good with that. It looks like then the only open items remain AC44 and the C-Tech, assuming that Commissioner Carazana is on the NPO Tech.
Yep.
Okay, so is there anybody who would like to be on the AC44 in rotation? It was—I guess we had Commissioner Firehawk and then Commissioner Bivins. Does anybody want to roll into that? I think a large part of this year will be to focus on the rural areas, right?
So, is that—is that usually in the evenings, or when is that?
I think that—Kevin, they meet three times, is that correct, for the working group? So, it's a three-time kind of a meeting, and a lot of the things that you'll be working on is the—you know, you guys have been going through your goals and objectives, and now they're moving into more—
Action items.
The action items, and working on the—developing those five big moves and stuff like that, so that'll be a lot of what this one will be dealing with.
Got it.
That'd be interesting, though.
You are interested, Lonny?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Better okay with everyone else, it's kind of informal here. All right, so Commissioner Murray, you are—congratulations on the AC44 Comp Plan Working Group, and on the C-Tech, anybody interested in—
Just a question, looking, it usually meets Wednesday evenings, is that what I'm seeing?
Is that you Google that and figure that one out?
Okay, I think that's what I'm looking at here. I—I could be, sure, yeah, I'll do that, every other month.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, and that, I think, fills all of the seats. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the committee membership discussed today?
So moved.
Second.
Great, vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, everybody. We will now move on to Item Six, Review and Adopt Meeting Schedule for 2024. Barnes, you are up again.
Right, so you have a meeting schedule that's been provided to you in your packet, and hopefully, the dates that are there are acceptable, and we are looking for, again, a motion and a second to adopt that schedule.
We did move December's. December's the only time we have a conflict, it seems like, because the second Tuesday usually is right around Christmas, so we've moved that up, so we would just—like we did last year, we'd have two meetings back to back.
So, a back-to-back December meeting?
And they're on that list, exactly.
Yep, yeah, okay, okay, great. Do we have a motion to adopt the 2024 meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
All right. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to—
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I did find a few dates that I can't make, so I've sent them to you and staff. If others know of times they can't make, we can find out if there's a time when we're all going to Timbuktu on the same week and can't attend or something.
Great, thank you. All right, we are now on the consent agenda, Item Seven.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, there's actually an associated motion on the scheduling, now that the Board has adopted—or the Commission has adopted the schedule, there's actually a separate resolution to adopt sort of emergency meeting dates, and it's kind of fitting that that we're having this discussion this evening. There's a resolution, although the PC doesn't have to advertise its meeting schedule, in the event that the—that there's inclement weather conditions or some other reason to cancel the meeting, there needs to be a resolution to automatically continue the meeting and the agenda to the next regular scheduled meeting, and staff has included in the agenda package a resolution that allows the Commission to do that. So, before proceeding on to the consent agenda, if there could be—if there's any discussion, and then a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for— The resolution to set the schedule and establish continuation dates for meetings.
And you said that wording is on our agen—on our agenda?
There's a link on the agenda, yes, sir.
Oh, a link, okay, but we don't have it in front of us here.
Got it.
Someone like to make a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution that has been presented. Resolution to set Albemarle County Planning Commission meeting schedule and establish continuation dates for meetings.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to the consent agenda, and would like to ask if any of the Commissioners would like to pull this item. It is one item, and it is the approval of the draft meeting minutes from December 19th, 2023. And if not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
All right. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that was a lot of agenda items. Thank you. We are now moving on to the meet—of the meeting, the presentations, and we will begin with Broadway Blueprint Phase Two Corridor Plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Benish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Benish, Development Process Manager. This presentation is to make you aware of a corridor study we have underway for the Broadway Street Corridor, and the status of the work that we've done to date on that project, and we're about at the midpoint of that work. We have two consulting firms that are collaborating on this project, 3TP Ventures and Line &amp; Grade Civil Engineering. Rachel Falkenstein of 3TP Ventures and Daniel Hire of Line &amp; Grade will be taking you through presentation of the work today, and we'll have an opportunity to answer questions and receive comment from you after that presentation. We also have JT Newberry from the Economic Development Office here also to help out as needed if you have questions. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel, I think, right?
Good evening, thank you, David. Good to be here before you. My name's Rachel Falkenstein, for those of you who I haven't met, and good to see you all again, for those of you I've worked with before. As David said, we're here tonight to present where we are so far with the Broadway Blueprint Phase Two Implementation Study. Just to orient you quickly in what we're talking about when we say Broadway, our study area is outlined in maroon on the map before you. The Broadway study area is south and east of the city of Charlottesville, and it sits just west of the convergence of the Rivasna River and Morris Creek, so it's kind of sandwiched in. It's just south of the Woolen Mills neighborhood in the city, and it sits to the east of the Carlton Belmont City neighborhood as well. So, goals for this project, our focus really on identifying some implementation steps that the county can take to support connectivity, placemaking, and economic vitality within Broadway. Want to work to leverage some past public investment that has happened in this area to continue to build upon opportunities within Broadway and to support the county's economic strategic plan. And then the last one is a process goal, to work on collaborating with the diverse set of stakeholders who both live, work, and visit within Broadway, as well as our partners in the city, both staff and city officials, since it is just adjacent to the city, and shares transportation networks with the city as well. So, just to talk us through our scope and kind of where we are in the project, as David said, we're about halfway through the study so far. The first part of this study was focused on just information gathering, listening, stakeholder engagement, and trying to understand what the challenges and opportunities are in the area, but also building on the work of Phase One that was done by the county a couple years ago, and I've put the Phase One intention up here, this is kind of the outcome of that work, and a result of the work was a recommendation to further study and identify some implementation steps. So that's what we're doing with this project. We'll share some kind of draft concepts, these are really—we're in the ideas phase right now, kind of gathering what we see as some opportunities to receive input on, and then after we get through this phase, we'll have some more refined recommendations to bring back before you all. So far, we've done a good bit of community engagement and tried to have different types of opportunities to meet with stakeholders in the Broadway area. We've had some pop-ups, we've had some roundtables with businesses and property owners in the area, and we've had some small group or one-on-one interviews with property owners and tenants as well, to learn about kind of what the issues and what the opportunities folks are seeing, having spent more time in the area, and just being there in the day-to-day, and what they're experiencing. And so tonight, we want to present kind of what we've heard, what we see as some observations and opportunities, and some draft goals for us to kind of work towards as we identify these implementation measures for Broadway. So we have four topics for you tonight, where we're going to share some observations and opportunities, and we're going to start with placemaking, really because this is kind of a pivotal topic within Broadway. It's an organizing theme of our work, and it's really what we're trying to do in Broadway with—with this study. And when we say placemaking, we're talking about what makes a place interesting and vibrant, what makes people want to live and work there, what makes a place a destination. And often, it's referring to planning and design of public places. But interestingly, in Broadway, we're seeing a lot of private placemaking going on from private organizations and businesses as well. There's the work that's been done with the public investment in the Woolen Mills redevelopment and the placemaking that has gone on with that. But there are also some other really interesting things happening and more of a grassroots nature in Broadway. So our observations related to placemaking have looked at the existing amenities and resources. There's, being at the convergence of the Rivanna River and Morris Creek makes it a really rich place with natural, recreational, and historic resources in this area. So both the natural and the built environment, we think, are interesting amenities that are, contribute to making this an interesting place. However, the visibility of these amenities are not super abundant. If you're standing on Broadway Street, you might not know, if you're not familiar with the area, that you're a couple hundred yards away from the Rivanna River and the Rivanna Trail Network and all of the amenities along that. So that's something that we noticed that is an opportunity that I'll talk about in the next slide. And then secondly, local businesses and organizations, as I said, there's a good bit of grassroots placemaking happening. There are some local organizations that have art studio space, community garden, really interesting landscaping, wildflower gardens on the properties. There are opportunities to attend classes on woodworking and attend events in the space. There are also private businesses really converging around beverage making. There are coffee malting. There's craft cideries and breweries, all kind of converging in this space and providing tasting rooms and opportunities for kind of social gathering within Broadway. So we see some opportunities to enhance what's already there and kind of build upon what the work that's been done so far. I think a really straightforward opportunity is better wayfinding signage, both within Broadway to identify those amenity spaces, but also telling people how to get to Broadway. There are some transportation challenges with some of the city streets that are narrow and aren't designed for heavy vehicle traffic. So also wayfinding within adjacent neighborhoods to let people know the best routes to get to and from Broadway. Continuing on the greenway connections that have already been made within Broadway, and the county's doing the work of exploring opportunities to get across the Rivanna River with the pedestrian bridge. We see this as an opportunity to become a kind of a trail hub for the community, providing access to broader city and county trails. But right now, we don't have any public space within Broadway. So exploring an opportunity to find a small public park, pocket park, or gathering space could be another opportunity to enhance the public realm within Broadway. Daniel's going to talk about kind of placemaking within Broadway Street itself, so I'm going to leave that off for now. But these are some other opportunities that we see. Lastly, in placemaking, I want to touch on the county's role. This is something that came up in the conversations we had with stakeholders. Like I said, there's a lot going on that's kind of organically happening from the businesses and organizations that are down there. And we see the county's role in this work as a supporter. And this might look like the county supporting a community organization, helping them out with a grant application, or formalizing an informal trail network that crosses properties that the property owners want to see become more formalized. So their role in that placemaking would be more of a supporter. But when it comes to the public realm, specifically Broadway Street, we think the county has an opportunity to be more proactive and do some improvements for placemaking within the public right-of-way. Going to move on to land use and development patterns. Our observations around land use really have been focused on the county's kind of policy and regulatory environment. We looked at the comprehensive plan and the zoning map and saw kind of what was allowed today and what the future vision is for the area. We've identified a mismatch that you all might want to explore as you go through your AC-44 process for the future land use, as well as the ongoing zoning update that you're working on. The mismatch is in some residential properties along Correus Row and Marchant Street, where your comp plan calls for some residential and then some significant areas of green space, but your zoning calls for the residential to be light industrial, and then the green space is residential. So it's a bit of a flip, something to explore as you go through either your AC-44 update or a future master plan update, to see if maybe this area wants to become, maybe continue to be residential, maybe a little bit more infill development in the area or potentially mixed use. But what's there today is residential, so I'm not sure industrial zoning is the right fit, but something to explore a little bit further. The existing uses are primarily industrial. I mentioned kind of the beverage creation that's happening, as well as a lot of artisan manufacturing uses that are starting to pop up. But all of these would be kind of categorized as industrial. And we heard from the community, they want to see this continue. They like the industrial vibe of the area. But some people want to see more residential infill, but some people don't. There's some concern about that tension that can exist between residential and industrial. So I would say there's mixed support. Some people really don't want residential and some do. As far as development patterns, it's a low-intensity kind of building environment there, mostly single-story. You can see by the building footprints here that the buildings are generally set back from Broadway, located kind of in the middle of the property, not really conducive to like a human-scale environment. But it leaves opportunity for some infill on the site as well. One other thing I'll mention is utility access is something that the county might want to explore further if redevelopment future, if the area wants to redevelop more intensely in the future. Parcels on the west end of Broadway are downhill from the sewer main and have private pumps to access that sewer main. So opportunities for maybe connecting to the city system, which runs parallel on Franklin, could be explored. Otherwise, that property wouldn't have the ability to redevelop any more intensely. So touching on a few opportunities for land use and zoning, I already touched on kind of retaining the industrial uses, at least in the near term for this property, for this area. But perhaps expanding some flexibility of other uses mixing in with the industrial, such as commercial retail uses that support current industries. For instance, a tasting room can be challenging because of some constraints in your zoning right now. Maybe expanding some flexibility there to allow those to happen more easily. Arts work, arts uses and live work are other uses that came up as things people would like to see more of. If a mixed-use future is desired for this area, it's something that the county might want to do some live work on now. And I'll touch on this a little bit more on my next topic. But the market is kind of pushing this area towards mixed use just because of land values and the proximity to the city. So that could be something the county wants to explore for the future, and there are some steps that can be taken, I'll touch on in the next topic, to get this area ready for that. There are, as I mentioned, those resources, environmental and historic resources on the site, doing some analysis of what resources the county wants to protect and being really clear about those in your policies and plans, I think will help provide some clarity about where development should occur within Broadway. And then the last topic I'm going to touch on before Daniel talks about this street is business retention and affordability. Our observations around this topic came largely from discussions with the community, with the businesses within Broadway. But then we did a little bit of market analysis, and what we heard was largely backed up by the analysis and the market data we pulled. So Broadway historically has been an affordable place to start an industrial business within the county, but that has been changing over the past few years. We have seen assessments gone up significantly in recent years, and land costs, as land costs have increased. We looked at 2022 to 2023 tax assessments. They went up an average of about 7%, though some properties went up as much as 10% in that single year. So that concern is real, and it's being felt by the property owners down there. And we heard some concern that doing this study and identifying more opportunities for public investment would further exacerbate that pinch that they're feeling. So that concern is out there. People have concerns that they won't be able to afford to stay. And if so, where will they go? And we looked at local inventory. You have a very low vacancy rate for your industrial properties. It hovers between 0 and 2%, which is really low. And that means people don't have places to go if they need to leave. So that's something we've observed, is something we heard loud and clear from the community. It's a concern that's out there. But these are essential businesses and organizations to the county. They're valued community jobs. They provide goods and services that we all rely on. So I think it's in the county's best interest in trying to find a way to retain these businesses within Broadway, and then broadly looking at kind of the county as a whole and seeing where these businesses should locate moving forward. And so those are some of the opportunities that we've been starting to kind of think about. What are some targeted investments and programs that can be focused on the Broadway area? Arts and cultural district designation is one that the county could consider. This wouldn't apply to every business within Broadway, but those who are doing those arts types work and organizations could benefit from a designation. And the county could provide incentives. They could provide tax rebates and other programs for those organizations if they went down this route. There's also several opportunities for incentives, such as public-private partnerships, or if a property does redevelop, the county could incentivize keeping space for existing businesses or providing startup space. A business incubator space is another idea that has come up in our conversations. So those really targeted programs that look at how we can retain these businesses within Broadway, and then perhaps long-term, maybe elsewhere in the county. And zooming out, looking at opportunities to increase countywide industrial land inventory is something that we think would be important to look at long-term, but maybe with the AC-44 process, if there's an opportunity to do that, and then continue the business retention efforts that your Economic Development Office is already doing. And so that wraps up my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Daniel Hire to talk about Broadway Street.
Thank you, Rachel. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So one of our guiding principles in this work. Oh, I'm Daniel Hire. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, it's very common for me to know who I am, but I forget that. I always need to remind. Yeah, well, this is changing. That's true. Things are changing. Thank you. Daniel Hire, Line &amp; Grade Civil Engineering. As I was saying, one of our guiding principles as we thought about Broadway Street is implementable projects. We don't want our recommendations to simply be academic exercises. We want to find ways of actually doing work on the corridor itself that results in change for those who use the corridor and protects their interests as they need to use the corridor. As you know, there's a lot of exciting transportation projects around the county that all need funding. And so we've tried to frame our work on this study in such a manner that projects can be implemented, some of which at very low costs, so that we're not just talking in vain. So as we go forward, I think I want to specifically note that we're trying to think outside the box in some of our recommendations. Currently, Broadway Street, the roadway itself, is a part of the VDOT roadway inventory. As Rachel's initial slide showed, it's kind of an island unto itself, surrounded by city streets and hydraulic corridors. So in terms of VDOT's ownership and maintenance of the road, it's an island to them. When it snows and their pod trucks have to get to Broadway, they've got to come through the city to get there. The pavement itself is variable in width, as this graphic shows, which is interesting in terms of what we'll recommend to bring some cohesion to the corridor. As Rachel mentioned, historically, the corridor has been supporting industrial businesses. But as the corridor is trying to learn what it wants to be, we're thinking about that. One thing we've heard loud and clear through all of our meetings from the land owners adjacent to the corridors, because they're light industrial or industrial uses, they have large vehicles that come to their properties regularly. And they are worried that street improvements may make access for vehicles, specifically their delivery vehicles, to be more challenged. So we're certainly wanting to be mindful of that. If you were to walk along Broadway in its current form, you would notice that does have a lot of interesting things to provide. There is great landscaping along the corridor in certain areas. There's mature trees along the front edge of the roadway in certain areas. So we're not necessarily starting from a negative, like, perspective. We have some good things along the corridor itself that we'd like to use in our recommendations. The character of the corridor itself, I'm inclined to say is kind of a rural and urban mix. It's surrounded by city streets, and yet there's no, you know, there's ditch sections along most of it. So it has this kind of interesting hybrid character. Similarly, because the roadway asphalt can be so wide, we do experience or have heard specific counts of speeding along the corridor. You can get moving pretty good through here. You might want to be, you know, take a small airplane off in certain areas. So you can get moving along the corridor. So with that, I'm going to try to identify near-term, midterm, and long-term thinking for your feedback, and we would love your feedback on these items. So you may or may not know that here, within the next couple of months, the Albemarle County Service Authority is doing a water main replacement project along Broadway Street. And as a part of their work, they intend to mill and resurface the entire length of it. And so this is a very near-term opportunity for us to add paint. And that paint, while really just a very innocuous, like, implementation, can begin to provide certain boundary conditions on a relatively ambiguous corridor. So what we are asking for consideration is that upon milling and resurfacing this road, we put some paint down. And if we choose to do some additional work to kind of feather in the margins along the roadway to keep the width more consistent, you might end up with paved shoulders that are available for someone who might choose to walk there. Specifically, I'm specifically not saying it's a pedestrian facility. It's just a roadway shoulder. But the striping itself could contribute to, you know, mitigating speeding and, while at the same time, not inhibiting large vehicles from moving. We've discussed this with VDOT's local staff, and they have been supportive. And they are actually trying to help us identify some similar projects where VDOT has done similar things so that we have more of a, you know, an example of where this has been done. But all initial conversations have been supportive. So that would be a very near-term, like, in the next couple of months, like this year, sort of opportunity. The midterm improvements, this needs some explaining. So what we were hearing in some of our stakeholder engagement was that kind of this grassroots-type energy along the corridor. Some people have used X Art Park as another, like, the vibe they're trying to go with along this corridor. It's industrial. It's artistic. It's creative. There's makers, you know, making amazing things. And then there's also, you know, just light industrial uses. And so X Art Park came up as a unique example of an informal creative community. And as currently conceived here in this midterm improvement example or idea, we would kind of, well, first of all, it would require the county to think about becoming the owner of the road as opposed to VDOT, which has been an interesting conversation to have. The county is becoming more urbanized in many respects, but it doesn't exactly have its own street standards. It would adopt VDOT standards typically, and it doesn't, at least, I think the county is just starting to get into having the equipment required to maintain some of its streets. So if the county was willing to become the owner of the corridor, or otherwise maintain it, and VDOT will be very eager to have that conversation, we might have some opportunities to do some more non-VDOT-style improvements, which might include converting some of those roadway ditches into rain gardens and things like that. That starts to, you know, I've shown some pollinator gardens along the side. There's just, simply, there's opportunities to think about what this corridor might be that's not a VDOT highway, so to speak. The county may want to consider designating the paved shoulders as pedestrian facilities, but that would require additional improvements in certain areas to make sure that that pedestrian facility can actually meet the letter of the law in terms of what the law requires for a pedestrian facility. So this midterm improvement idea certainly requires additional conversations and additional engagement with the county and VDOT to really flush this out. But this was largely a concept that was informed by stakeholders into what they were looking for and hoping for. And finally, this is this long-term improvement, which would be more costly, but also more traditional than what you might expect along the corridor. I'm trying to put this out 20, 25 years from now within a broader network of multimodal and users of various kinds. This is a traditional shared-use path type arrangement. I think whether this is to be considered and implemented largely depends on what we see over the near term. If we see more people walking along the roadway margins where it's striped, I think the county can observe and then have an interesting correlation between how the corridor is changing and what the use might want to be. Certainly, this type of project would be a substantial investment with the stormwater drainage improvements that would be required to really implement this. But it's not a far stretch for reasons that Rachel mentioned, you know, with the Rivanna Trail Network and people trying to get to downtown Charlottesville, and just the broader network of how non-motorized transit operates in the vicinity. So this is certainly worth considering, but I think we're recommending this to be a wait-and-see type concept to see how near-term improvements might enable people on the corridor to use it in a different way than it's currently being used. And with that, I think we're sort of done. I'll end with, this was a very quick kind of dash on an update, so there's a lot more nuance to some of these roadway items as well as land use and placemaking. But we're happy to take your questions, let you dialogue, or, you know, work through whatever you want. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Well, why don't we start with questions? And this is sort of presentation slash work session, so you can be informal about it. I might as well start at this end, not to put you on the spot.
Sure.
Or if you'd like, I could start at that end.
No, we can stick with this side for now. It's funny, you know, with the Broadway presentation, the first time I went to visible records, maybe three years ago, I didn't even realize I'd left the city limits. And at some point, I probably saw it on the map, like, oh, that's part of the county. But it's definitely been this tucked-away part of, a little forgotten part of the county, but like right wedged in the urban zone. I read through the presentation earlier too, and then listening here, there's a little element of like all things to all people in some of these ideas, because we've got like nature trails and arts district and pocket park, and we've got big trucks delivering things. And it's a little hard to figure out, how does that all work together in the long term? I mean, I think it can, but I think there's some things that could happen if we do. And what I mean by that is that with the private placemaking, like Visible Records, it's like Charlottesville's little version of an underground arts collective. And the idea of an arts and cultural district there is really interesting. I think that could be a really cool use of the area. I mean, they're already kind of doing it, and then it's across the street from like, you know, a warehouse. It was a warehouse, still is partly. The example of X Art Park is one that I can speak to a little bit, because I'm on the board there, and it is informal and creative and unique. But over time, the industrial uses basically go away, aside from brewing alcohol. And that's just like a reality financially. Plus, there's the financial realities of running an arts district, which are very difficult. And so that's just considerations there. The interest in more mixed use and arts district and all these things, I'm wondering, you know, like when something gets too cool and well-known, the prices all go up, right? And that's something you all addressed in the report, and I just wanted to sort of dog ear that. So there's a couple questions that don't really have full answers, I'm sure, but just like questions I wanted to sort of hypothetically ask. One is, if we've learned any lessons from any other city anywhere that have actually been successful in terms of dealing with gentrification pressures when there is something like an arts district, you know, put in place? And then the other kind of question is, if and when that happens, which, you know, the market pressures are probably going to make it happen at some point, one way or another. And this is definitely beyond the scope of this study in neighborhood, but when does the county get more zones for economic development? When do we designate more industrial spaces for this kind of thing that are affordable so people don't have to pick up stakes and go to Waynesboro or whatever? So those are my broad questions, more like a speech.
Great, thank you. That was great. Watch what I do here. Commissioner Fireoff?
I thought that was very interesting. Those are along the lines of some of my comments, just that I was reading this and thinking about, you know, like it allows some of these more funky uses, and it's industrial, and it's a teeny bit rundown-looking the street itself. But then we do all these nice improvements, and then their assessments continue to go up, and we kind of lose those sort of more organic funky places. So I guess I have mixed feelings unless the county could, if the county wanted to invest money in sprucing it up, but then do some kind of special district for it, like some lower, you know, some enterprise zone or something they wanted to make out of it where they would give a tax break for those who locate there so that they wouldn't be penalized for all the improvements. So I'd really like to see something creative. I'm no local taxing expert, so it's not going to be me coming up with it. But otherwise, I just worry we'll just, you know, we'll zhuzh it up to the point where it's longer affordable. And I run a small business, and I know what it's like looking for space for nonprofits. And then the other thing I just, is more of a question, is whether or not any thought was given to putting stormwater treatment along the sides, because you could have vegetated bioswales that were providing beautification, but also dealing with stormwater treatment on an older road that probably doesn't have stormwater treatment. So that could be a way to potentially fund it, because there is more money than ever before through the Infrastructure Act and other sources for low-impact development, BMPs, retrofitting. So maybe if it was that kind of a demonstration, we might be able to leverage more funds for it. It is an industrial road, so of course we have to be cognizant of tractor-trailers sliding off the side and, you know, the various things that happen with deliveries. But anyway, I think it would be neat to encourage it in arts district, but again, I'm just questioning the affordability. And last thing is, I would like to see mixed use in there. I think if you, it depends on the type of people you attract. I think we think of residential, like people in little bungalows with picket fences. But you could have like a very hool industrial-type vibe there, and it could still blend with industry. Other cities do it. All right, I'm going to stop talking now.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. So I just have a couple of questions first before I sort of go off on my, on a seasoned rant. So a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was this year or that last year, there was a project that came to us to try and do something with the Delorme Building, which for those of you who are new to that kind of level of sheeter-y, that's a high-end French company that happened to have a distribution center here. And if you go to the downtown mall, it's right there and all of its $200 for a Do They Cover Glory. So I wondered what happened to that place there, because they were trying to do something interesting there, and this is just as a piece of knowledge, because I think they were trying to do something that was both industrial, but also looking to the future, to do something that was right up against the abandoned trail rail, railway, railway trail that was there. So that's a question. And we may all just be remembering it fondly, but I think that's part of the thing that goes, that I would want to know more about, because that would give me some currency into what's happening there that's come before us. Not what's happening there organically, but what's coming before us. And I forget who presented that, but I'm just going to ask that question. I'm struck by, on this piece that says, under connectivity and getting around, that VDOT doesn't know what that road is. It doesn't have a number, so it's not a six, or it's not a two-digit number. It's, that's something that I find odd, that a road that is in the Commonwealth does not have a VDOT characteristic to it. And so I would want to know more about how does that happen? And do we have any more roads in Albemarle County which are like that? Because I can tell you, it's going to be a snowplow's owned by the Albemarle County Chancen Hill that the county takes that road on. Because why would it take that particular road on and not take some of the other roads, which we've all heard about, the Free Union Express roads that are always in bad condition and that always need some taking care of? So while I think this is an interesting idea, I'd want to know more about why it's an unknown, it's an orphaned road as far as the state is concerned.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? I'm just curious to get some clarity on that. So are you saying that Broadway Street is an unnamed road?
It says on page, on the attachment B, where it says connectivity and getting around, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth line is noted, is that the roadway is owned and maintained by VDOT. However, the roadway does not have a VDOT roadway classification. And so when I saw that, I was like, well, that's a really interesting thing. It's an orphan.
I'm just curious as to whether that does impact how it's maintained or not.
That's where I'm coming from. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up. This is a prior technicality. I wrote that. The classification is like, VDOT classifies the roadways into typologies. And so this one doesn't have a type. It's not like I can say it's an urban street or a rural street, like a GS4 or a GS7. It's just, they own it and they maintain it, but it hasn't been classified as like, this is an urban road or this is a rural road.
Or what they expect. So the whole idea, when Rachel took us through a piece about Places 29, we were looking at what would that area look like, there was this whole topography about if it's this kind of road, you'll get these kinds of things on it. If it's this kind of road, it's to get these kind of things on it. And so I'm expecting that, and that wasn't driven by just her making it up, it was driven by looking at a whole suite of opportunities that come with roads being classified as this versus that.
Exactly. It's relatively uncreative on our end. We say, oh, VDOT's classified it as this, so this is our choices.
Right.
So that's what I had intended.
And so on this one, we have no classification?
Correct.
It's an orphaned road. We have an orphaned road among us folks?
I hesitate to say it's an orphaned road. VDOT definitely takes care of it and feeds it and provides for its shelter and all those.
It's a foster home. It's a foster road then. It's a foster care by VDOT.
So does the fact that it's not classified present more opportunities, or does it limit opportunities?
I think it provides more opportunities.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah, thinking.
Yeah, because V-
But again, I will say, I cannot believe that the county supervisors will take on a foster road. Because then, I mean, that would be, I'd want to know what the inventory, before I recommended that, I'd want to know what the inventory of roads like that might be. So, because I don't believe, if it's a one-off, then I think someone like Mr. Barnes can have a conversation about why is it like that? And how do we get it to be not like that? You know, that's would be one of the, as opposed to why do we take it on? But I have more, yet I have more. So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we can talk more about that. Yeah.
I think that's, so the thing that I'm, I mean, I'm very excited about what I read, but I'm also very sort of nervous about what I read. Because those of us who are a certain age and come from a certain place remember when West Broadway in New York was this really industrial place, and I had lived in space up there for nothing. I could not do that today, even if I had followed some particular career options that I did not. And so what I would not want this to happen, what to happen here, is given its closeness to Carlton Avenue, which I believe is going to come under pressure. Carlton Avenue is going to come under pressure unless the people who own the sort of community there, and then I think my recollection is that there was also a community near Morris Creek that was of similar type, so that what we will eventually do by improving it, we will challenge it to remain as eclectic a place as it is today, which has sort of grown organically. Which is why I think we see both the ability, as you see in lots of sort of commercial space that converts to artist space, because commercial entities leave it, and then you have artists sort of come back in and they backfill the space until it becomes so hip and so well-developed that they then get pushed out. And unfortunately, in our community, with our rigid land use percentages, there's not very many places to go. So in essence, what we will be doing is moving people out and away as opposed to within Albemarle County. And so everyone's heard me say this before, this is not the first time I've said this. The decision about how we use our land really goes to how eclectic our community is going to be, how diverse our community is going to be. And if we continue, even though I'd love to see some of the ideas that were brought to us by our former colleague, because I think it makes sense. I would not want that to be the tipping point, to then turn it into a part of our community that those interested in those types of businesses can no longer be in. You know, I don't want to have to pay travel time to have the rug cleaning person come from Waynesboro to clean my carpet. First of all, I don't want to have to drive that far to get my carpet off. It's bad enough now. It's bad enough now, those of you may know this, that Salem Ease Way, who used to be on the downtown mall, is now in Green County. So if you want to take your Aunt Alma's rug to them to get it cleaned, where you used to be able to take it to downtown, to the downtown mall, you now have to take it up there by the Lowe's in Green County. Nice drive, and there used to be good food up there. But we're pushing people away, which in essence is making it more expensive for people to live and do their work here. And so that's going to be my piece. I love it. I think there's some things which we can do to make this a place that attracts that eclectic and artist type, but I'm fearful that it's going to drive that artist and type away. And where are we going to drive them to? To the emerging Waynesboro, to the re-emerging Waynesboro. To the re-emerging Waynesboro. I do have a question. Isn't there a bridge that goes from Woolen Mills, not Woolen Mills, from whatever that place is called, Willow Tree? Thank you. That goes from Willow Tree across Morris Creek? Is there a bridge that's over there still?
You're talking about the new pedestrian bridge?
Yeah, the pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, the Rovana Trail kind of cross is there on that new bridge.
So what I'm asking, and what I'm suggesting, is that let's amplify the things which are there. That's with wayfinding, okay? That's with protected bicycle, bicycle and hiking kind of stuff. To give people a way to come to that space that doesn't feel as if we're appropriating the spirit of that space. And that's my spice for right now.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Murray?
Yes, so a couple things. First of all, I've actually ran on that, in that area. And quickly looking at Strada and heat maps in the area, that area is currently being used by cyclists and runners. So it's not a question of by striping, adding the striping, whether pedestrians will come or not, they're already there. So I mean, that's definitely going to provide safety for those people that are already using that for walking and running. I'd also second Karen's suggestions about sustainability and stormwater management. I wonder too, you know, I think there's some opportunities here to use incentives to encourage sustainable development in that area. Perhaps offering, you know, TIF, for example, for, you know, people willing to redevelop in a sustainable way. I also strongly support mixed use in that area. And I think, you know, opportunity, I would rather see, given the proximity to the river, I would prefer to see more vertical development and more buffer on the river than to see more development spread out and just sing the story. So those are some of my thoughts.
Great, thank you. Awesome. Commissioner Claiborne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I do have a couple of questions for the presenters, and then I'll leave with some comments. I'm not sure if you want to come up to the podium, but I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about the road networks leading up to Broadway and your thoughts on how that starts to impact how you think about Broadway? And I used to live off of Linden Avenue, so I used to run. I don't run as much as Commissioner Murray. My runs are like two and a half miles, those are 20. But I would sometimes run down that street. Sometimes I had different experiences. I didn't feel like it was always safe. And so I'm curious if you could speak to that piece. And then the second question is, do you know the economic impact of this district as we're having this conversation? And then I'll follow with some comments, so.
I can try to speak to the roadway network component of that question. But did you have any specifics, specific questions nested in that? It felt like a kind of a broad question.
I guess from the context of if we want to make a destination, which is drawing people in, when people are traveling to get to that destination, whether it's by foot or bicycle, whatever it may look like, you have to take those other networks to get there. So what is that experience like? Or through your studies and explorations, how does that influence what you might recommend regarding how to treat Broadway Street itself? Does that make sense?
It does, and I think there's a number of different ways to answer it. I'll take a stab, and you can correct me if I'm going the wrong way here. We actually did meet with the city NDS, James Fries and some of his colleagues regarding their understanding of the adjacent roadways, and also if they had any planned improvements along those roadways. And we heard some interesting things, although I think it's all very long-range aspirational thinking, but they had intention to put either a broader sidewalk or a shared-use path along East Market Street, actually, which I think is a very aggressive project to pull off. Carlton itself, coming down toward Franklin, toward Broadway, is an interesting stretch of road. There is bicycle accommodations along the road. There's no current planned improvements along that roadway itself from the city. That said, so from a bike and pedestrian network standpoint, I can see that our most valuable connection points from along Broadway itself will likely be pedestrians or bicyclists either continuing up Carlton to try to get over to the shared-use path by be or run that comes into the city proper. But there's a missing link there, basically from the intersection of Carlton and Carlton to be run, more or less. And I don't know, the city has any specific intentions to infill that. I do think there's natural connections that are being made under the one-way tunnel, under the railroad track along Franklin, going over toward East Market. And in fact, some of the wayfinding we'd like to implement, and we've coordinated with the city on, is actually putting wayfinding on East Market to sort of say, Broadway that way, as opposed to cars going all the way down East Market and ending up going the wrong way on a one-way road where it's kind of a cluster of sorts. where it's kind of a cluster of sorts with angry residential neighbors and, you know, validly angry neighbors at that. But it's a little bit of a cluster with the wayfinding scenario of how am I supposed to get to Broadway? Where exactly is Broadway? I feel like I had one more point to make. Oh, I think the final point to make related to connectivity and the broader network is actually a little bit of concern around continued large vehicle access to Broadway and how large vehicles are actually navigating through the city to get there and how challenging it actually already is. You can come through the hog wall around Franklin, you can try to navigate from 250 up Meade, down Carlton, onto Carlton. It's a little bit of a mess. And it, because we, the county, or VDOT in that, in that sense, have no control really on that network, further improvements on those networks could further constrain vehicle movements that are trying to get to Broadway. I don't know if I answered your question directly, but there, there's a lot to be considered there, and we're kind of dancing around some of it in our, in our initial work.
I think it starts to answer it, I would just encourage you, as you start to tell that story, that, that part is in there. The second question was regarding the perceived economic impact of that district as it stands today.
We don't have a lot of cohesive data on that. We could look into it a little bit further. What we have been able to pull, were, was focused specifically on job types, what types of jobs are within Broadway. And we found that it has a higher proportion of low and median, medium income jobs than the county as a whole. So the county as a whole is about 50% and this area is about 70%. And then we looked at types of jobs and wholesale trade jobs and arts and entertainment recreation are a higher percent than the county as a whole. And this area has about 12% of the county's wholesale trade jobs. So it's pretty significant for a small area. We can look further into it if there are data points that you're wanting to hear more about.
No, I was just trying to get some context to it. So, so thank you for the answer. I'll just make just a couple of comments and I'll, I'll pass the floor back to Mr. Chairman here. I guess when I first started looking at the presentation, just inherently light industrial and residential, for me, it feels conflicting. And so just watching how you grapple with that would be important. And I'm just going to push a little bit on that slide. I think it showed you a midterm kind of solution. Just thinking of, so, I'm someone with two young children. If we happen to live there and I've seen the, the vehicles that use that road, going to push a little bit to explore that solution a little bit more. I think you said you might have had some other tidbits because you were rushing through that. If you wanted to share those, I'd be, love to hear that, like how, how you would be addressing that further. The, the second portion, the arts and cultural district piece, my initial reaction to that was that feels like that would be like in the heart of a development area. And so I wonder, as you look at various options with a, on a, a research innovation district, right? You think of Willow Tree and you think of entrepreneurs who are starting breweries and things like that. Does that open up doors to more funding? And I guess economic development could probably speak to that. But they have Go Virginia grants, growth and opportunity grants under research and innovation. Does that start to play a role? Or the Community Investment Collaborative, CIC, which caters to graduating entrepreneurs year after year after year who are still in the community, starting businesses and doing something, doing things like that? Does that start to help the cause and tell them the story? And then lastly, I'm curious about the river as a destination beyond recreation, right? Like, can this become a place where I want to eat and have a view of the river? Does, is that allowable, right? Or are there places where, as I'm enjoying a nice brew, that you can hear the water rushing after the rain, right? Like, how does the river become a destination beyond just tourism? So I think that's all I have at the moment, so, Mr. Chairman.
Great comment, thanks. Karazan?
Thank you both for the presentation, the, the insights that you've brought on, on, on this locality. So I, a lot of what's been said, I, I certainly am in agreement with. I actually have more questions for you guys. And one of the questions, as already been alluded to here by Commissioner Bivins in terms of the pressures that are impending pressures on Carlton Avenue area, particularly with the city's rezoning. Have you given some thought about how that would impact Broadway Street? Would love to, would love to get your, your, your thoughts on that. Particularly, I mean, I know you guys were meeting and talking with the, with the residents there, the, the people that work there. Are they talking about some of these changes and what, how that would affect Broadway?
They are, and what we've heard is concern about displacement. They've already seen the land values go up and their assessments go up. And I think as the area around it redevelops, that pressure is only going to continue. And so there is concern about if there's a future for some of these businesses and startups in Broadway or if they'll be displaced. So that came up time and time again in conversations we've had with people. We looked at past year's assessments and what's happened, and it's really accelerated since 2022. Before that, it was kind of steady, but there was a, a big bump in 2022. And if the city around it continues to develop, I, I would think that would only continue.
Yeah, I, I think it would be interesting to, as we look deeper into this idea of how we develop Broadway, some of the infrastructure improvements that we can make, but with a foresight of what is coming or potentially what is coming. It, it is prime, I mean, you could see this, this, the corner of, of Franklin and, and Carlton. That, that, those are areas that are are targets with the new zoning. And the density is going to go up. And I can't imagine that it's going to slow, unfortunately, I can't imagine it's going to slow the, the, the the increase to the cost of doing business in Broadway. So unless we have some you know, magic bullet on how to either incentivize this idea of mixed use and you know, some adaptive reuse, some infill, there's certainly opportunities for infill site and some densification within the Broadway area. I, I would love to see that incorporated, that kind of thinking of how can we work with the community to think of what their future might look like potentially? And as we densify and provide some of these infrastructure amenities, which we're beginning to tackle with the road, the road is safety issues. I agree with my colleagues here, there is a conflict already with the, with the light industrial and the trucks and the residential and the pedestrians and the recreational uses there. I'm just wondering, is there some insight that we can glean as we get this crystal ball and begin to think about what will be happening next door? As soon as these, these zoning changes happen in the city, it's going to have a major impact on this area. Maybe it's just that question mark of, let's think about, as we continue with, with your, I would love to hear what your next steps are on this. But I would love that to, to be part of the thinking. You know, not just think about the county, but what is the city going to do that's going to obviously have a significant impact? I'll let you react to that if you have anything to react to, but.
Yeah, sure. And I, I think anecdotally, what we've heard is that demand is already there. Some of the property owners shared that they've received phone calls from developers, cold calls, about selling their property for development. But your regulatory, your zoning map right now does not allow mixed use development. So it's, it's not allowed right now. I think if you change that, there would be demand for mixed use and residential down there. We've talked to property owners that want to develop residentially, but they're not allowed to under the county's current regulations. So I think there's, there's latent demand. And this is an opportunity for the county to kind of think about what it wants Broadway to be, whether it should continue to be industrial or it should be something else. And what we've thought, the way we've thought about it is it makes sense to continue industrial for now, but let's zoom out and look at the county as a whole and see where other places where industry can go before changing Broadway.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry if you already mentioned this. One thing that would be useful additional data, which I'm not saying you have tonight, is just to get a understanding of the proportion of buildings that are, like, have rental tenants versus ones that are owned. Because it would be, I would think that the rentals, the ones who are renting would be much more fragile in terms of displacement if, you know, this area gentrifies. You guys identified that in your report. I'm just curious, like, this, you know, if I own my building and I'm just appreciative that you improve my area, you know, it's more attractive to my employees and it's great and whatever. Or I'm a tenant and as soon as my property becomes more valuable, they're going to kick me out for a higher paying tenant.
And I'll just close by, so right now, you, you, you pointed to the discrepancy that we have in, in, in some of our zoning documents right now. And so, but what you're saying is if we, if this moves to mixed use, there are developers out there that are already very eager to, to take advantage of that. And what it can, obviously, I mean, to me, I think there's a lot of opportunities there for mixed use and probably that's where it needs to be. But it's also going to, the downside of that is it will displace the people that are there.
Great, thank you.
I think, I thought you was about to answer my question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't have numbers for you on owner versus tenant occupied, but we can pull that. I think it's a mix, though, just from what I've seen and talking to people and, you know, looking at the data. But we'll, we can pull that and share that information.
Yeah, I just wonder if our economic development department, and we have a new director that could help, like, thinking of some creative solutions, like, how can you improve this area while also helping small businesses remain in place? Or, yeah, because that's, some of those tenants you talked about, like, they add to the character of the area and they are a little bit more funky and they're also the ones that have the least money. Not, it's not, it's not the well-heeled ones adding as much character, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I would just say that, that there should be particular care given to the parcels next to the river to not create an intensity of uses there that would further impair the, the buffer of the river or cause conversion of that potential green space to other uses. One thing I'd add to is, you know, one of the, people have often talked about, when we talked about the Ravenna River, about, you know, the ability of restaurants or other things that could look out on the river. And there, there does tend to be a conflict between, you know, having a, a restaurant or some other business like right on the river, it's like looking out on the river versus conservation of that natural resource. But I think there's an opportunity, though, if you have a taller building, then you can indeed look out on the river without actually be impairing that buffer. So I think, you know, as you go up and heighten a bit, you do develop those, those views of the river that you don't have if you're single story. So just something to consider.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, I, I mean, I hope we're, I mean, I think it's helpful to look at whatever this doc, this document. There, there is just going to be, and the reality of it is, there's only we will only be able to make this area so attract, so attractive, given there's a water treatment plant there. Or sewage, is it sewage or water treatment? A sewage treatment plant there, which in this case, I think is a good thing. Because it means that there will always be sort of a drag on flipping the property there too quickly. Because it is going to remain industrial unless someone here can tell me that, I forget the initials that go, whoever these people that go with this thing, that they would pick it up and place it someplace else, which I don't believe they can do because the underlying infrastructure can't just be picked up and placed someplace else. So I think as an, as a near term, what we really are talking about, how do we, how do we sort of encourage an area that has been sort of, that is in foster care right now? How do we encourage it to have some of the amenities, sort of wayfind, some gentle wayfinding, some, some, some re-establishing or, or configuration that takes place on the roads which are there that is not necessarily in conflict with what it is? It is the remains of what used to be a, a factory at one end that now happens to be this, this, this technology place that may or may not be here in three years, which actually that parking lot could be an excellent place to put a really tall building in my, in my portfolio versus a place that we don't have a lot of space for businesses like this in, in Albemarle County. And while I have been noisy about taking commercial space and turning it into residential space, I will really, really be noisy about taking industrial, light industrial, artist space, because I do think there's some value to having space in our community for artists to create things. I remember when McGuffey was this place that you could go in there and you'd find these people building very big sculptures or very big paintings. Today, you can't do it because they can't afford to do it anymore. So where are they going? Oh, that would be that place I said long ago, Waynesboro. I would not like to export our artist community to Waynesboro. I think it is very important for the kind of place that claims that it has this heritage of Sir Thomas Jefferson, you know, the Renaissance people, that we have arts in this community. That is a critical piece of who we are. And so I would, I would, I'm speaking in my forceful New Year's Eve voice, New Year's voice. I would be reluctant to see the arts displaced from this community for housing, expensive housing.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of us are saying the same thing. The question is, how, how do you counteract the, the pressures that are coming? Particularly what's, what's, what's going to be happening across the road there?
Oh, it's already happening across the road. Now, the one thing I will say is that the salvage company is probably, I can't even imagine with the salvage company, the salvage company on, on Carlton, what it would take to make that a reasonable place. You know, that, that whole swift there. I don't, I don't, so in my lifetime, and maybe in all of our lifetime, it's always going to be a salvage place. And so I don't think without some sort of significant sort of infusion of big dollars that comes, come to that part of the, the city-county line over there, I don't think that you're going to happen. I mean, many of us have been here long enough know about the East Market Street fight, even when the place would flood out, how they wanted nothing done there because they did not want that lower part of East Market to be changed. Now, if they happen to have money and they happen to have Teslas, and so, you know, they've got that kind of key that they can key up on it. And so I don't want us to abandon this group of people because they don't have money and they don't have Teslas.
Awesome. I have a few questions and comments too. But before I do that, any other questions, comments? Hands raised, all good? So I'll just, I'll just say a few comments and probably more comments than questions. I echo a lot of what's said here, so some of what I'm going to say is plus one, but some of it is to try to categorize it a little bit to sort of summarize where I think we're going. And one is to, the question of proximities and partnerships. So as you look at the study, you know, and you've done a lot of this already, but thinking about the James Frieses, thinking about the adjacent zoning and partnerships with the city under the categories of uses, adjacent uses. And, you know, what's on the boundary and how does that, how is that impacted either by the revised zoning ordinance that's coming through the city? Or, you know, how do they interact? Natural features, right? How they can be benefited or, and, and benefit each other? And in connectivity, whether it's transportation or pedestrian? And thinking through those, and again, some of these you've, you've categorized. The second thing is the property, and I guess there's a question on this when, when, and Mr. Benish and I talked a little bit about this too. How much land is actually available as buildable land in this piece of, on this piece of property we're talking about, roughly?
How many acres would you say are buildable?
Yeah, I mean, is there open space that is buildable land? And if so, roughly how much? Or is it all pretty much?
I don't know that I can give you an acreage, but I would say that based on what I've seen with topography, and I would say you could maybe go 15 to 20% over what's there. I don't think it's going to be, I think your, I think your density is, is vertical as opposed to.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And so along the same lines, a question of what are some of the issues that you're facing? Are there critical slopes? Are there flood plains? Are there things that, that is all woven into that as well, right? So that's something to consider. The third area, so it's partnerships, proximities, property plan. I don't know if, and maybe I completely missed this, so forgive me if I did. But we've talked a lot about different uses. We've talked about preserving established, preserving and supported, supporting established uses, arts, et cetera. Is there a master plan? Is that one of the- supporting established uses, arts, et cetera. Is there a master plan? Is that one of the goals? Like, doing an overlay of this and thinking about those proximities and how that might impact or influence development?
So this study is focused on identifying implementation projects rather than being a planning exercise. However, we hope to take advantage of the planning exercises you're already doing. You're doing AC44 update, and so that would, that would look at land use. So we hope we can hand off some recommendations to that team, as well as the ongoing zoning ordinance rewrite. We hope we can hand off some recommendations to that team about some tweaks to the zoning that might support what we've been talking about tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. That's, that's helpful perspective. Because I was just thinking about, you know, establishing, established and supporting existing uses, how do you introduce mixed use into an area that is already pretty developed? Thinking about reuse and reclamation and how that can be included in this, and then the layer of economic development. And then the last thing I'll mention is priorities. And I think you hit a little bit on this when you were talking about the creativity and getting, connectivity and getting around. You know, that is a priority, right? It's near term. It's going to happen. There are utility, there's a utility infrastructure that's going in, and that's a decision that needs to be made early to take advantage of that. So I don't know how that all plays in, but I think what you're hearing, unless someone disagrees, is if there's a way to have some sort of a multi-use path that could be incorporated into that as well, that would be a preference. It just seems like good design, especially in an area that could be potentially walkable. So I don't know if that's helpful at all, or if you need more near-term direction, but that seems like the midterm improvement option. And then the last thing I'll say I saw in that option, starting there, was lighting. I may have missed that in your narrative, but is that one of the things that's also being recommended?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we get to the point of considering midterm or a long-term constructed strategies, we would certainly introduce lighting.
Awesome. So to that point, just safety and security is another general topic. Great. Great representation. Any bounce backs? Did we lose Commissioner Murray?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Work you guys have put on in this. I really do.
Okay.
He's there. He's there, Chair.
Awesome. Thank you all. Great work. Appreciate it. Okay, we will now move into the public hearing section. And we will begin with SP 2023-7, Home Depot Outdoor Sales Storage and Display. Welcome. Malashevsky, if we could have the staff report when you settle in, that'd be great.
Yes. Let me just get set up here.
Yeah, I want to go there. I would like to see this development in Alamo County. Was that the highlight?
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to see you all. I'm Margaret Malashevsky. I'm one of the managers in the Planning Division of Community Development. When I last presented to you was in September of last year. I'm presenting tonight on the same topic, and that's the Home Depot request for a special use permit for outdoor storage, display and sales for their new store that's proposed at the Fashion Square Mall. As we discussed in September, the proposal was to demolish the Sears store, which is located at the north end of the mall, and replace it with a new Home Depot store with a garden center. Areas for sales, storage and display were to be located in and around the garden center and along the front of the new store facing Route 29. The applicant has discovered that the condition of the mall is such that a portion of the north end of the mall must be demolished in addition to the Sears building. That means the parcel to the south is now part of the project. That parcel was not included in the original application, and to meet legal requirements, the project description needs to be updated with that parcel. And that means a new public hearing is required, and so here we are. With this shift in the project, the applicant has taken the opportunity to make a few changes to the design. The Home Depot store is now proposed as a standalone building with a travelway between it and the mall. There have been minor changes to the size and shape of the building and the garden center, and areas proposed for sale, storage and display have been redistributed along the building elevations to coordinate with those changes. Those redistributed display areas and the changes in the architectural design don't really change the visual impact of the proposal on the entrance corridor. This plan shows you the current proposal in the overall mall site, and the new travelway is that pink highlight that you see. This is the architectural design of the current proposal. Also, as we discussed in September, most special use permits are reviewed under Section 33.8 of the ordinance. SPs for outdoor storage, display and sales are reviewed under a different section. That's under 30.6, which is the entrance corridor overlay section. That section limits the factors to be considered to determining whether the use is consistent with the applicable design guidelines. Those guidelines are the entrance corridor design guidelines. The ARB applies those guidelines. The ARB reviewed this revised proposal in December of last year, and the ARB voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request with staff's recommended conditions. These are those conditions, the ones that the ARB recommended. They are very similar to what you recommended in your September meeting with just two minor changes. The first is a change in Condition 6. You may recall in our discussions that the applicant requested that it be made clear that planting along Route 29 requires VDOT approval. We acknowledged that at the time, that VDOT review and approval would occur with final site plan, but we've taken this opportunity just to clean up that condition, to clean up the wording of it. The second change was a merging of what was Condition 8 with Condition 1, and that was really just for consistency with our standard language for SP conditions. So our recommendation is for approval with the conditions listed in the report, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you. Great report. Any questions from the commission? Pretty, no questions? Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Think you know the ropes, but you have 10 minutes.
I do. If you want to run through them while I'm bringing up my presentation, that's fine.
Sure thing. You have 10 minutes. When it goes yellow, skip to your most pertinent points. When it goes red, I'm cutting you off. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Megan Nadostep with Williams Mellon, here representing the applicant of Home Depot. Along with me is John Karikis with Home Depot, and our architect is also zooming in if there's any questions that we can't answer. So first, I want to thank Margaret for, and staff for their patience as we work on this redevelopment and changes.
Can you tell me who the?
I'm sorry?
The name of the architect, just in case.
It's Dan Boyle with MG2. You don't see him on there?
Okay, okay.
Well, hopefully, we won't have that issue. Can answer any questions. Thank you. Again, thanking Margaret and staff for their patience as we discovered some issues with the construction and the change to the plans. So it's been a little bit of a challenge. So I appreciate all the hard work. Margaret went through this already. We're redeveloping Sears. So what, just to expand a little bit on the construction, when the construction, crew of Home Depot went into Sears, the first thinking was, oh, there's just one, there's two walls, one for the Sears building and one for the mall. Well, when they got in there and got all the plans and dug them all out of this big room that had all these old 1970s plans, they discovered, actually, there's only one mall. And so therefore, we need to take a portion of the mall out. And so we had a conversation and decided an opportunity was there to take more of the mall down and implement and start the framework for the Place's 29 redevelopment plan to have that travelway go through. So that's why we're here for you tonight. Just quickly reminding everybody of the views from 29 and Rio Road. And as Margaret explained, this is another map showing kind of the portion of the mall that's going to be taken down on the aerial photograph. You can see this here is where the orange star is. This plan was submitted, and I know there's a lot going on, but just to quickly walk you through, this orange line is the new footprint of the proposed Home Depot, and the gray area is where the Sears is and was the prior Seminole. And then the green area is the portion of the mall that will be removed, and you can see where the travelway is now going. One of the opportunities that we also found was, if you'll recall, there was a tool rental center, and in that area, there are tools, and it was actually going to be visible from portions of Rio Road, but we were able to tuck that kind of around the corner, and it is located here now, which has less visibility for the display areas and the entrance corridor. So Margaret showed this plan, too. Just quickly, what you saw before in September, on the left and on the right is the revised concept plan. You'll see that planting area that we talked about was implemented with a note that says it's subject to VDOT approval. Another change was we adjusted the spine of the pedestrian access and created that more direct access. Also, one thing to note is, it's hard to see in this one, and maybe the next one, we can see it better. The expansion of the display and sidewalk area, actually, we designated and expanded the front of that pavement to include a sidewalk that actually goes and makes that pedestrian connection, as well as formalizing that connection from Rio Road down to the store as well. And so if somebody wants to get to the mall, they're able to go, and there's room with the display area to walk. Here's a future, close-up version, again, of the display areas that were just adjusted. Again, that tool rental center was tucked away. The temporary staging areas stayed basically in the same location as you previously saw. This is a proposed parking. Again, quickly going through, same, we're still working through ARB, and we'll be back before the Architecture Review Board for all the landscaping along Rio as well. And here's that closer enlargement of that planting area that we're proposing and hoping to get feedback from VDOT during the site plan and ARB process. Front elevations, these are close-up versions. You can see that tool rental center again, that was coming out towards 29 is now away from the face of the building and around the corner. And the garden center stayed virtually the same. So that concludes my presentation. I have four minutes left, so it's pretty good. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Yes, sir. So, good to see you this evening.
Nice to see you.
Where the tool sent, the tool rental center is?
Yes.
Is that undercover? So if I come around there and I want to go across to the, to the breakaway section of the mall now, can I, I just walk across there and there'll be some sort of, there'll be a walkway so that cars are coming from picking up their tool? They'll have an identification, there'll be something, they'll identify them so that they see that as a, as a walkway?
So there's a, there will be a walkway on the other side, and there is a crosswalk here that will get you to that tool rental center.
So there's a way to delineate that there may be people walking across there?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And then this is more for staff, Chair. So there's that big green piece of property across the street from this on Rio Road, that there's been a lot of discussion about that becoming something new and build upon for all these years. It's sort of, I think, the front piece of a vanity or something like that. Will there be a cross, if that gets developed, will there be a crosswalk to get people across there so that they can connect up to, if you go to your, there, so that they can get to that sidewalk, or are they going to have to, and that can be, we don't know. Oh, look who's standing. I'll be quiet.
I think there's a crosswalk existing there already.
Already?
Already.
All right. So if you could just think about maybe including that, because it was like, how are we going to get people over that sidewalk?
Yes, and I probably have a photograph of it somewhere, but there, there is one there.
It's just moving, because you're doing all these nice things to move people, and it would be nice if, in fact, they can move across Rio Road without getting.
And actually, in our, our site visits, we noticed that there's a dirt path that people have.
That's right. There is a habit trail there. That's right. There is a habit trail there.
So we're just formalizing that connection.
And, and one other thing, Chair. So if I'm understanding it correctly, on the front bit there that's facing 29 where there's a, where you show plantings, everyone will remember that I was the voice that said, why are we making them do something when it wasn't there all these years? And so when you have VDOT there, VDOT will have the opportunity to say, we're not going to make you do something that hasn't been there all these years.
That's right.
Okay.
If it, if it conflicts with the utilities.
If it conflicts with, yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Murray?
Yes, as, as noticing, looking at some of the images.
Did you have a question?
Oh, yes. Can you hear me? Um, yeah. So I was noticing in the images, some of the pictures of where trees were, that they were, they were raised up and surrounded with concrete. I don't know if you'd ever considered as a suggestion lowering those so that you could put curb cuts to capture stormwater as opposed to keeping stormwater out of the areas with the trees. It would be, I've seen to me as, as a waste when those could be stormwater capture facilities and also benefits the tree, because then you don't have to be watering the tree all the time.
I don't anticipate any of the trees being lifted.
He meant, he means bioswales. He means if, can, they can be planted in recessed planting beds.
Oh, I, I see.
As a stormwater BMP.
Okay.
Since you have to put them in there anyway.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly take that back to the team for discussion, but we haven't discussed that to date as part of the outdoor display. But as part of the site plan, we'll definitely consider that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Murray. Any other questions? Commissioner Murray? No? Commissioner Claiborne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One quick question, probably discussed at the ARB. I was just curious for my own self-satisfaction. Anything come up regarding visual, visual access of rooftop equipment from Rio Road with that? I was curious, how was that addressed? I was surprised I didn't see anything in the conditions, so.
Yeah, well, for the outdoor display areas, and Margaret can correct me if I'm wrong, they're just focused on the display and the garden center. So we still need to go through the ARB process for the architecture of the building, including the rooftop equipment, which we'll be doing soon.
Got you. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. So if you go back to the image that shows the plan of the building and the adjacent alleyway that's being created between the existing?
This one or?
Uh, that one. That'd be great. And I don't have a pointer, but I'm just trying to understand. So you will be taking down and rebuilding a wall?
That's right.
And that's an arbitrary location, or is that there because there's actually a structural wall?
There is actually a structure.
Got it.
John could probably speak better to this, but there are bays
Yeah, that's right.
of the structure. And so it was discussed on how many bays needed to be taken out. And I think it's going back four in order to get to that location, in order to provide the sidewalk and travelway.
Got it. Thank you. And what will the material be on that side of that building?
It will be similar to the existing mall, because it's going to be a temporary wall, we hope, for the redevelopment of, of the mall. But we are actually submitting, we submitted an application to the ARB for that demolition and minor amendment
Got it.
at the interim condition. So.
Thank you. And then, and the reason I ask that is, you know, obviously, that area right there with the two walls, it's going to be terrible place to be. And I'm just trying to think if there's, if there were ways, if that was an arbitrary. And I'm just trying to think if there's, if there were ways, if that was an arbitrary, and you could widen it slightly and create, I don't know if anything would live in there, to be honest, but something that gives a little bit more breathing room. Because if you're parking in those spaces that are adjacent to Home Depot, and you have to get to Home Depot, you have to walk out into traffic from what I'm, or across the street to the sidewalk and then walk down. Just seems odd that there isn't a sidewalk adjacent to Home Depot. But I know that's a little bit outside of what we're talking about today, but it is still related to the outdoor area.
Well, I appreciate those comments, and the challenge has been the balance of taking enough of the mall down
Sure.
and structurally, but also having their tenants still in the mall and keeping the space for some of those tenants. Home Depot is actually relocating some of the tenants in order to go back the four bays.
Got it.
But we don't want to have too much disruption in the interim. But it's definitely on the radar to have a more streetscape-type environment when the redevelopment of the mall occurs and it comes down, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from commission?
Just had a follow-up on that wall, on the new wall on the wall. Is there any opportunities or will there be any other openings on that wall, or is it just that one door in the middle?
So we're still evaluating that as part of the site plan process and in conversations with the ARB. I think that may come up, but there, we haven't explored more than just a temporary wall with an entrance, so.
Thank you.
Great, all right. Thank you very much, appreciate it. We'll move on to comments from the public that are attending this evening. I don't see any. Madam Clerk, anyone online? Okay, awesome. So I will not offer the applicant a follow-up opportunity, because there was no comment. So I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, and open it up for discussion. Is there any further discussion? Or would someone like to make a motion?
Give it a second for further discussion, if there is any, but otherwise, I can make a motion.
Sounds like you're --
I'm it, all right. I move to recommend approval of SP 2023-007 for Home Depot Outdoor Storage Display and Sales with the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Okay.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carozana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, staff. Okay, we will move out of the public hearing and into the committee reports. Does the, do any commissioners have reports to share? Yes, sir. Commissioner Bivens?
I, we had a CAC meeting last night and heard, I guess it's a special use that's going to be coming to us at some point, it was, it has not been scheduled, for the Charlottesville climbing gym.
Sorry, which CAC?
Charlotte's, oh, Jack Jewitt, Jack Jewitt.
Thank you.
That one. I don't have my page next to me.
It would be Places 29.
Thank you, Places 29 Hydraulic.
Awesome, sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, you don't, it's like, you know, it's Greer, I go to Greer once a month. And so the Charlottesville Climbing Gym came before, had its public hearing, had its community meeting last night. And for those who would like to know where that's located, if you come away from Foods and you're going down Old Ivy Road, so you go under the truss, trestle, and you'll notice that there's a gray building on the left-hand side that used to have true quartz in it and some other items in it, in it, that building right there, the owner and a new resident, and a new business owner came before us to put, in consideration of putting a, interesting, something that we've talked about, but I've rarely seen here, actually taking the roof off and increasing the height of the building so that they can put a tall wall to climb in, climb off there. And so it'll come to us at some point. But the interesting piece for me on this was, and you can tell, is that it had already been to the, it had already been to the ARB
Mm-hmm.
before it came to us. And so that's the perennial thing for me, the confusion of when the ARB says, oh, that's a good plan. And so the applicant was feeling as if he had a good plan, which he may in fact have a good plan, and he comes before us, and it's like, okay, now you're going to get asked a lot of hard questions. And so it still feels as if that process is out of sync for my non-ARB mind, that they get a really good, they get lifted up at the ARB, and then they come before us, we're part of the legislative process, and then it goes to the supervisors who are the ultimate, ultimately, and it would seem that the ARB would be part of the site review plan, which happens after they've already been told, yes, you can build this. So I've said, by the supervisors, when the supervisor say, yes, we approve this SP, then they go through a site review. And it would seem to me that ARB would be part of site review as opposed to coming before, happening, occurring before they get to us, so.
I would love to hear staff's thoughts on this. My understanding, which may be wrong, was that ARB comes in as sort of advisory to the Planning Commission in a sense, and then when we get the application, we see ARB comments and then are able to use those to help weigh in and make a decision.
That's interesting.
Does that sound right? Am I missing that? And then they will have to go back to ARB, but it is part of the special use.
I will share, if that makes sense, but that's certainly not how it feels to me in the staff report.
I see, I see.
When I read the staff report, and the fact that there's a vote.
Yeah.
So anytime I vote on something, then I'm provide, as opposed to saying, we've, you know, so that's fascinating, but that's not how I ever interpreted it.
The only reason I, and we'll hear what Kevin's about to say, he's going to correct me, but the only reason that seems to make sense is because I recall years ago, when I was on the ARB in like 2006, we didn't have an opportunity, the ARB did not have an opportunity, as I recall, to weigh in on zoning at that early stage, and then that actually did come about. Again, I may be wrong on this, but it, and so, so that, and we would get as an ARB things that were like three-quarters baked and not have an opportunity to weigh in on something that might be more impactful to the zoning.
My understanding is that the ARB is a separate application.
Who are you again?
Kevin McDermott, Deputy Director of Planning, thank you. The ARB is a separate application that could be tied to either the site plan or the rezoning if it wanted to be, if the applicant decided to do that, but it doesn't have to be. So it could be either case, we could see, and I'm thinking that the --
Well, the ARB, as you know, has a number of different roles. They issue certificates of appropriateness, they can also act in an advisory capacity on certain other matters. I'm not familiar enough with the specifics of this proposal to know which hat the ARB is wearing for purposes of this review.
If you give me a minute, I can tell you what they said at the ARB meeting.
The ARB could take a vote if that, if there was an ARB application. They could also be approached in an advisory capacity and be allowed to just make advisory comments, so, and it could be either case, depending on what the, how the applicant wanted to proceed with their project.
And sort of the, and I understand that. It just, I also have witnessed, or I have observed applicants who believe they got a yes
Yeah, I understand.
from the ARB, and then all of a sudden, this group of folks up here, we're asking them a different set of questions, which sometimes they've had to defer, and they've had an ARB yes. And so I just, I'm just trying to get, sort of eliminate some of this cognitive dissonance, which people not having a full appreciation of what that process is.
That's a great point. I mean, because as an applicant, right, if you're bringing a design to the ARB, they make some changes to it, they bless it, then it comes to the PC, then they're going to be, yeah, so that's interesting.
I can tell you what they, what they proposed from the meeting, which was last Tuesday. They wanted, they really were asking for a special use permit to provide the applicant with the comments listed in the staff report amended as followed to be addressed with the next submittal. So they were just, they were talking, they talked about the entrance corridor, the visibility. You can find the final action memo for the ARB on the calendar. It tells you that, they talked about planning of trees and shrubs so that they could, for the canopy to, you know, be, so they gave them seven, nine things to do before they come back again.
That's, it's a good point. I mean, again, as an applicant, right, you may see those nine points, you may go back, you may spend money and time addressing those nine points and come back, and it may not be something that would work from the Planning Commission perspective.
Yeah, particularly if it's a special use permit, I mean, it's got to, it's got to come here.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to be sort of dismissive of the process, I'm just hoping
Good question.
that we can, you know, as we're looking at improving our processes or enhancing our processes, that they become a level of clarity, sort of look at something like that.
Yeah, and even if it ends up being, as part of that, being a way to communicate to the applicant that clarifies that.
That's, that's all, that's right. Thank you, Chair.
Great, any other committee reports? All right, I'll turn it back to Mr. Barnes to review the Board of Supervisors meeting.
So since your last meeting in December, there's only been one board meeting, and that was the one that they had last week, which was their organizational meeting. And so Mr. Andrews was appointed to be the chair, and they worked on their other committees and stuff like that. They're meeting that they, you know, the normal sort of business meeting will be tomorrow. And I think one thing to let you know is that the Montclair rezoning was supposed to go to a public hearing tomorrow in front of them. We apparently have had sort of a staffoo in the database systems, and a date wasn't affected. And so out of prudence, that's, public hearings can be pushed back into February.
Got it, thank you. Great, thank you. And to continue, AC 44 updates?
Yeah, and if you don't mind, you know, in our little fun that we started at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't get a chance to introduce myself.
I was thinking that same thing. I, that'd be great, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll just take two seconds. First of all, I'm very excited to work with you guys. I, this is day three for me, I guess, but I did this weekend, go back and listen to you all, the Planning Commission, on the comp plan stuff from last month. Really enjoyed the conversation, thought you all brought up some great questions, and so I'm excited to be working with the Planning Commission, it's obviously very thoughtful. I mean, I appreciate that, you know, I've worked with other planning commissions who are not as much. And so I'm looking forward to working with you all. My background is quite diverse, quite honestly. I've done environmental planning, I've worked county in 2000, 2003, right at the beginning. I think they adopted the neighborhood model like the month before I showed up. So I got to see that, sort of go through the D-grinder, and then I worked for about six, seven years in the private sector locally here, so trying to entitle plans and working a lot with road design and layout of stuff. And you may criticize some of the work that we got accomplished, but, you know, it was a very educational experience for me to sort of see what it was like to be on the private sector side, understand profit motive, and work on design, and really start to understand what it is to make sense of place, of reality. Market fell out in 2007, a firm I was working with went out of business, and I ended up in Waynesboro for about eight years. So, you know, hey, listen, it's all that success that we laid forth, it's like stealing your business from here, I guess, now, but anyhow, Waynesboro was a very informative thing, and I really enjoyed working there. I've been working at VDOT for the past five years, doing two different jobs. One was working with the money that was coming from the state and the federal thing to move forward, your capital improvement projects with the city of Charlottesville. So learned a lot about how that works
Yeah.
and in the past year and a half as a district, assistant district planner. But I'm very excited to be back here in Albemarle. Hopefully, that wide breadth of experience and different things will prove to be of use to you all and to the county in general. So again, I'm very excited to come and work with you all in the county.
Awesome.
So
Thank you.
The update on the comprehensive plan, obviously, you all just had your second work session on the latter part of the draft goals. The first one that was dealing with environmental, historical, resources, parks and rec, housing, and I think industrial uses, that's going to the Board Supervisors for a work session January 17th. And then they will be getting that second package of stuff, that was the land use, rural and development area land use, transportation stuff. There's an information packet in mid-February, I think the 21st, and then they'll come back on March 20th for the Board of Supervisors to have a work session. So I think, obviously, we're continuing to work on the comprehensive plan, I've already had a couple meetings on that, sounds like good stuff moving forward, but, you know, we'll still be working on it, but I think we're waiting for the board's input before we really start moving on to Phase Three in late March, early April. So that's where we are with the, and I believe there's some rural area work sessions coming up, one in Batesville and another one, I think, in Esmont. I think Esmont happens first, and then there's one in Batesville. And I can get the dates for you as needed. But that's where we stand with the plan as it's moving forward, if you have any questions.
Thank you, I think it'd be great if you could send the work session dates to the commission.
Okay.
Be good to know, I saw the one for Batesville, I think, through you.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a privately sponsored one.
Yeah, okay, got you, got you. Yeah.
I think Lonnie is going to that, I'll be out of town on business.
Great, thank you.
Can I just clarify?
Yes, sir.
The actual meeting is not private. I think they have some private gathering before the meeting, but the meeting will be open to the public in the
Oh, I didn't mean it wasn't open to the public.
In the church there, yeah, so, just want to clarify.
Sponsored.
Yeah, and that, that one is the first one on the 24th, January 24th, and then the second one is the Esmont one in early February, I can't remember that.
14th or something like that.
Yeah, the second week of February, approximately, but we can make sure you get those dates.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I did check my calendar, and I will be attending the one in Batesville.
You will be attending Batesville?
Yes, I will.
I might join in.
Chair, could I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Barnes. So do you have a sense when the Planning Commission will wrestle with the tax incentives that may, that hopefully will come out of the joint meeting we had with the supervisors? Last, was that last year? Was that last, last year?
Last week, last week.
Was it, was it in November? In November. And if you don't know about that, then I'm giving you a piece of information that somebody can help.
I'm still drinking from that fire hose.
Okay, okay, okay. This is just something that, there was a, there was a half-day meeting between the supervisors and us with people from the community, I shouldn't say people, with developers, private equity developers, except for two of them were sort of, well, one's not a, one is a purely is a not-for-profit, and the other one is a blended profit, not-for-profit, to talk about tax incentives that the supervisors might consider to enhance affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay.
And apparently, it's coming to us
Yeah.
before it comes to them.
Yep, that's going to happen at your next meeting, actually.
At our next meeting?
Yes, Stacy Peatia will be here to present on that.
Is it a public, is it a public hearing or is it a work session?
That is just a work session or presentation.
Oh, good, good, good.
No vote necessary, the board has already approved, moving forward with tax incentives, they're really just hammering up the details of that right now.
Oh, they have? Oh, okay, so will someone's
As part of Housing Albemarle, that was a great draw.
Because I thought that was one of those pieces that had, that the supervisors had been sort of wrestling with which direction did they want to sort of go off in, and I felt sort of comfortable where they were going after that meeting, or I should say, I felt quite obvious where the majority of their supervisors were going in that, after that meeting, and didn't, actually was somewhat surprised it was coming to us.
Yeah, so they, there will likely need to be an eventual vote by the board to implement the actual tax changes, tax code changes, but the, but they've already approved, moving forward with developer incentives, even if they had not known the details of how that was going to work. But, but yes, Stacy will be back here to present what they want to, how they want to move forward with doing those for PC feedback before going to the board in February.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good question. Okay, any old or new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you recall from last year, there was a moment we were carrying an item under this category that was city-county joint PC meeting. If it's your pleasure, I would just request that that be added back so we don't lose sight of that
Great.
as we move throughout your tenure here. As we move throughout your tenure here.
Great, great point. Thank you. All right, any other old or new business?